The following program is sponsored by The Greek, Ely's Radio Shack Dealer 570 Almond in downtown Ely, and brought to you as a public service by Georgetown Media in Ely, Nevada. Regional Planning Commission Meeting, June 16th, 2021.
I've sent you guys all got pictures. How do I send? Hey, sad. As far as you can see a notch in the wall where the water for my neighbor that was uphill. He lives in a bowl, so they notched the concrete, I don't know how many years ago before I had the property. But it's where his waters, rain, snow melt off, comes from his property into my property, runs through my property, down around to my driveway and goes underground and down to Culver and actually in a poker ditch and then to Culver and then on the ditch. But yeah, you know, I myself, I don't see any big deal as far as, but city ordinances or code is a 20-foot setback. Like I said, that 20-foot setback can put me about six inches from the drainage from my neighbor. And I just would like to move my buildings over so it ain't in the drainage ditch. That's basically why I'm here.
Thank you, Ely's. Good pictures here.
I don't know if you can call me some of my pictures or any questions?
Not yet.
Okay.
Hello again, Burton Hilton, homeowner across the alley from Mr. Bryant. I reviewed his pictures with him before the meeting for the height. Well, I had a question on the height and material of the building and just to see how it would potentially impact the house that I have right across the alley. And I have no problem with the building coming up and the variance with this. I'm in favor of it.
Great, thank you. Andrew, public comment?
So my name is Brad. I live next to Ken. And I would like to see him and be able to get his building. I can see where I kind of had the same problem with some of the water runoff from some of the other neighbors. And I can really see where the water comes through his property and where he has the room. But the way he's explaining, I can see why he really needs to get away from the water. There's no other way to take care of that problem that seems available. So I would be in favor of him building the building that he wants to, no problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr.?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I have a couple pieces of property near this area. And I'm in favor of Mr. Bryant getting the variance. In my rooms throughout the city, I'm seeing buildings built right next to, let's say it's a garage right next to the house. No minimum fire control requirements. The minimum requirement that Mr. Bryant is asking for is minimal. It'd be an enhancement. And if there's drainage coming off of anybody's property, there's a violation of the city code. You guys need to address that. He's doing the best he can, but even at that, you have an obligation to inform those that are approaching on him with drainage, violation of your ordinance. You need to address that. What he's asking for is not all that out of place. And I would support that fullheartedly.
Okay. Thank you. And we have a lot of being read in?
Yes. I don't have a microphone, so what if I pass Carol to read?
And they think I need a mic. It says, "City of Ely conserving Kenneth Bryant Building, a garage." I have nothing against this. Can you help me read it?
It's in English. She has trouble.
Oh, that's this young man.
You gotta speak up, Carol. We can't hear you.
Yes, George. I will do that.
What's that?
I will do that, George.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The only thing is, the only thing, if it is if, too high, it may be a problem because Bell Avenue has so much traffic and the road is so narrow. As I am covered, concerned about the traffic. Ask him if he could move it back towards the west. I am a neighbor to Ken. Sincerely, Bernie Throerson, also Bernie's.
Any other public comment? We will move on to item two. Discussion for possible action, approval of the variance application. You have Ms. Kenneth W. Bryant, which places her onto the property, which would not be the recorded setbacks. Property address and her general location, 11 Bell Avenue, Ely, Nevada, accessory parcel 001-423-904. Okay. I would buy there and I see what the problem is. Is Sniggle's property, there's a bowl and there's no way that the water can drain off of his property. It drains into Kenneth's property through that notch in the wall. And I think he said something about putting in a French drain to help channel that water out away from there. So I can see that there's a definite hardship on his part because the water coming off of the next property would be right up against his foundations. I don't know if anybody have taken a look at that.
Well, I mean, this was done obviously years and years ago, I understand. So at that time, it didn't really affect that property. And probably, I'm assuming the person, people that had it before then said, okay, you know, whatever. The fact of the matter is, is now this gentleman wants to build this structure on this property. And that's kind of impeding his foundation, you know, from being safe and possibly cracking, assuming all that stuff. So I think there's provisions in our laws that allow people to go against the setbacks if they can't build something safely or something impedes their way. Correct or wrong, but I believe there's something to that. I don't personally see a problem with doing it. Obviously, the house that's just to the south of him, you know, sticks out way close to the street there. I believe that was Juke Jizz old house there. And there's a lot of houses that are probably not following the setback here too. But I don't personally see a problem with it. If that's going to mitigate it by six feet, I don't see an issue.
Yeah, because it, from his fence line, which is the property line, to where the proposed building is going to be is going to be 14 feet.
Right.
Fine line, which is actually a pretty good distance.
How big is the building, sir?
Twenty, twenty-five by forty.
Okay.
And how tall were you planning on?
It is actually 12 foot eight tall.
So.
It's a Conex style. I got, actually, it's a different.
It's a Quonset.
It's a Quonset hut style building. And it's 12 eight tall. Actually, it's not quite 25 wide. And that's the concrete. But that's just, that's the whole purpose is, I don't like the idea of having enough water flowing, you know, whenever we get rain or snow melt alongside. On those pictures, I got some good pictures.
And I'll say, I appreciate, I appreciate that. I mean, there's nothing, at least a little ruin of a foundation was worse than you doing it.
Yeah. See, like there's the notch in the wall. This here is right up underneath the notch. And then that's actually, without the setback, that would be the edge of the concrete. And there's, I got another picture that's further away that has another state that's with the setback, which is six foot. I don't, myself, six foot is about, where I would, you know, part of water soaking into the ground and.
Do you plan on doing any raising to that, folks? Are you going to?
No, I'm still, at the highest point, it's in that corner of my property. I want to have finished lap like four inches above the ground and then lap. So I don't know, I haven't pulled the tape on it, but it's going to be about six inches above ground on that lowest point. And then there's further, which would be the west, the northwest corner, which is the least, well, that's natural fall, that's the lowest point of the property. So I have the most exposed stem wall, which city ordinance or code is a three-foot stem wall. So I'm got to do that anyway, you know? So everything will still be on the heartpan because I've removed, see, where's my grandparents' place? And where the building is now, where I'm proposing place building, it used to be a garden. So I went in, I took it in the last two months and I just removed all the topsoil, which is about eight, nine inches and some spots. And then like I said, in that one corner, it might even be 12 inches, maybe 13 inches. But it's a natural slope of the heartpan. It's already there. So I'm going to build on top of that. Which I'm going to use the topsoil. I got it stuck probably in my, other part of my property in the front yard. I want to dig out my basement cell and fill in my front yard and put the topsoil on top of that. And I have the grass again. Yeah, you know, it's just.
Appreciate it. This isn't in the flood zone.
Well, I don't see a problem with that. I think it's great that you're accommodating your neighbor and you're working together because we don't really see that. So I'm sorry. Can you hear me okay?
Not yet.
I don't see a problem with it. The only thing I would just ask is the setback on the side, is it 10 feet? Five feet, okay. Yeah, as long as, you know, that's met, I don't see a problem.
Lee Walter, building official. Yeah, setback requirements are five feet on the sides of the property, 20 feet at the front and 10 feet at the rear.
Just to check too, there's no utilities on that, on that side? I mean, I see utilities.
Not that I'm aware of.
Existing house, but nothing.
Don't have any other questions at this point?
Any more questions, comments?
I'm going to move, move as this variance, based off the fact that there's a duty, uh, due hindrance on existing conditions.
Go ahead and second that.
Okay, has been, probably passed, uh, in seconded by Leah. Do you approve of the variance? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Get passing. Okay, we now go to item B. Discussion for possible action. Home occupancy applicant is Manny Johnson, DDA, Manny Rose photos.
Hello. Hi. So.
Tell us what you see.
Oh, so I have a photography business. I don't do and do my business like in terms of having people come into my home. I just basically work on my laptop in my home. I have my state license to do photography. I did, I did have a whole location on Almond Street. But that wasn't used yet, so now I'm just working straight.
I appreciate your perspective in the business side. So it's pretty awesome. You're not expecting any additional traffic or anything? You're not storing anything because it's all digital, right? Let's do any chemicals, right?
No, yes, it's all digital.
It's all standard questions on the photography stuff.
I wasn't sure.
We assume that it's pretty much digitally for, but you never know if somebody's old school with.
I do have a phone camera, but I don't. My grandma's.
All right. I don't see any issues at all.
Straight forward. I don't see any problems.
I'll go then make a motion to accept.
Thanks. Any motion to approve from Jason, seconded by Andy.
Did you ask for any other public comment? Is there any other public comment?
Were there any other?
You need to speak louder. Not just you, everybody.
Okay, is that good enough?
Speaking of the mic, don't look at me.
Okay. Are there any more public comments on the homeownersy? Okay, and is.
I'm now going to make a motion to accept.
Okay. Jason made a motion to accept. I will be happy to second that. And Andy is happily seconding. And we'll put this to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Discussion for possible action. Amendment, the approval of parcel map subdivision, parcel applicant JCR Development LLC, initially approved on April 28th, 2021 meeting of the Regional Planning Commission. Subject property is one quarter section, north 22nd section, 14, outfit 15, north range 60 east. General location property is the Park Edition, Park Avenue and Avenue M, East of 17th Street. Nevada APN 002271-12. Amendment is to ensure the addition of conditions pursuant to NRS 278.462. Approval of the parcel map is on the condition that all requirements imposed by Nevada statute and Ely ordinance regarding requirement and subdivision be followed. Okay.
So my name is Casey Jones, JCR Development. So this was passed when you guys passed it the last time the county put this stuff out to bid. We did it. We got the project for the county. We went, we hired engineers. We have a ton of money, money in engineering, through Basin Engineering right now, to engineer the streets, the grades, they're shooting everything, the sidewalks, the curb, the gutter, the light poles, the fire hydrants. It's went through the Bureau of Safe Drinking Water. It's been approved. Nothing has been anywhere with anything. And then I told Mr. Howe and them from the County Commission, when they put that out to bid, that I was going to use help from other contractors and that because it was an Ely thing. So Mr. Weaver goes to build the property and then it gets stuck at the city because Mr. Weaver can't build a building because they're saying the sidewalks and that. Well, I signed the deal to White Pine County that I would have everything done within three years. I don't know why we're here. The guy can't get a building permit. Everybody wants a building in Grove. The guy wasn't issued a building permit. Renee or Dave can talk on that. Dave Miller, Sherfor Basin Engineering, he knows that we've done everything right. Basin Engineering has been hired to be all the engineering on it. Dave's plans are through an architect, our plans on the next building that we submitted to get approved are through an architect. Nobody's trying to do nothing wrong. I mean, you're trying to, you're getting a contractor that goes through J&amp;M for his concrete or me who goes through bath lumber or whatever. And all these people are benefiting off of it and we're sitting here because the guy can't get a building permit. Thank you.
Comment on that?
Yeah, yeah, once somebody comes forward, my understanding is, like he came forward, we opened it up so you could discuss also.
A building permit was issued for that property. And the only thing that was on it was it was placed with conditions stating that it met the city codes and subdivision codes, I believe it was, correct?
Which.
And so.
Right, which when you hire engineers to do all that, it's got to be.
Right, but that's all said on it.
Right, which is the city, which is also the city engineer.
So, so why did it get on our agenda?
Yeah, I thought there's not enough information.
That is a big stance for it to be on the agenda, facts.
I mean, I signed the agreement with White Pine County. They can hold me liable. If I don't do it in three years, then they're going to come back after.
We all know where you live too, right?
Correct, correct. But I mean, Dave needs to start building, and that, and that, it's all in it together. Not every contractor hates each other, so I mean, let him build the house. We have another one coming up next week that just went to the building department yesterday.
Yeah, I'm terribly sorry. I know it can be frustrating trying to line everything up. And I do recall discussing this. I don't know, Lee, are we missing something here? Why there's a pullback?
Lee Walter, building official for the city. When we, when I say we, I see me and Brad Christensen. He is mentoring me as we go along with this process. And we both determined that we didn't have enough information from what we were given. And certain things that came across my desk showed Brad those as well. They were puncture victory. In the deed that I received doesn't, doesn't say anything about paved roads. Doesn't say anything about sidewalks. The only set of plans that I received from Basin Engineering was water. I didn't bring anything. It's a map for where the water lines are going to be connected, sewer lines. And then a not soap rating, not soap rate rating plan. And that's it. That's all there is, I was received. And upon further review. So then that's where we came to this agreement between me and Brad and be like, you should really get more information. Not getting it. I just don't want to approve everything. And then we don't have the proper elevations for where these houses need to sit. You don't want them sitting in a hole, do you? And have someone like Ken, his neighbor, have all that drainage going into somewhere else. So it's just a lot of questions that still aren't being answered. And so that's where, where I, where we stand right now. Myself.
Can I comment on just what you said?
Are you kidding? No, but yeah, so Basin Engineering, BJ isn't here this week. So there is plans, there is everything that he's saying or thought. It did go for fire hydrants to the Bureau of Safe Drinking Water. So I'm not sure, I'm not sure where the whole up is because the roads are, the green light sign with the county is streetlights, paved roads, fire hydrants, the code, and sidewalk, curb and gutter, and front yards landscape. So is what.
Casey. Casey. The, where's the image right now?
BJ?
Dave, are you jumping in on this?
Yeah.
I mean, you guys, this is, this right now, on behalf of all of us, we, when we started here just recently, when we started here, our whole goal was to try to push through. Jason and I just got done talking. Our whole goal was to try to push through, try to encourage growth, try to make things happen in this community that needed to happen. Okay? And in order to do that, we've got to do it in a systematic way, obviously. All right? Just like you have to do anywhere else. But we want to do it without as, with as little hindrance as possible. It seems to me, and I know the whole story. I have no idea because unfortunately, a lot of us were not involved with any of this. We had no involvement with most of this stuff other than I think we've approved land, like survey, survey sites and things like that. Okay? So it seems to me like there's just a strong miscommunication as to what's happening here from my, from my understanding. Surveys. Bottom line is, you guys know your job. You know what you need to do and you know what needs to happen. And I'm, there's no doubt in my mind right now that you have that information, right?
So, I mean, if I can, I can add to what I'm saying. My name's Dave Miller. I'm with Basin Engineering. And as everybody pointed out, those that are actually working on this job with JCR and the county and everybody, they are out with BJ on his bike, right? We're going to tell them next week. So in regards to that, to my background as previous city engineers in three cities in two states, normal parcel maps cover the fact of the division of the property and the basic layout, basic grading to those lots. Parcel maps indicate, as it says here, that those maps will meet city and county codes, which are curb, gutter, sidewalk, all the development that's supposed to be required. The actual design set to that little subdivision or developed area, my understanding is, is those maps are coming as part of the development as it's being developed. So a parcel map does not give you, it doesn't provide you the house building plans. It doesn't provide you the final site grading plans. That is a parcel map for the water. The state law that's indicated here for subdivisions, all that says is, is parcel maps can have amendments or, it literally states that you pretty much can state and put conditions on a map of certain things. The map indicates it's going to meet the city codes. In regards to the parcel map, the parcel map, my understanding is, it just indicates the breakup of the plots. And the layout of that section of the road, which is that Casey and we were going to house. So my understanding is, is the design development plans for that are coming. And they're a part of the stuff coming that should be sent for review.
And just to be clear, this was never designed as a subdivision. Is that correct? Because you're building less than so many houses.
You're building as in so many houses.
So it doesn't even follow the subdivision. It's more, you're building one at a time.
Correct. Certain things follow the intent of certain stuff, but it is not a subdivision. Okay? So here is a breakup of the property. The actual site grading, a street, curb, gutter, whatever design, that is a separate plan than a parcel map.
So bottom line here is.
So I like what you're saying, Andy, is, and not to interrupt you, but as you mentioned before, I believe there's just information that needs to be passed on and, and it's just in that phase. And so there's misconceptions. So I believe we just need to get with Lee and find out what he's still needing. I need to find out what the other guys have got going on. Until next week, I won't hear from them, so.
Yeah, so, so Lee, if, I mean, I guess, I guess the big question here comes out to be is, would you be comfortable sitting down with BJ and the team and working with them? Because has there been any discussion?
There was, I sat down with BJ and the city attorney, Shane. And it was brought to my attention that, you know, it is not a, it's not a subdivision. It's a subsequent parcel map.
Right.
But to my understanding and what I was told by BJ is it still has to adhere to subdivision requirements. Maps. That's all I've been asking for. What are your grading elevations? What is this? What is that?
There's state down there. What is great state?
Give me some paperwork.
They got it.
Well, I don't have it. That's the, that's the point. That is the whole point right here.
So here's the problem. Here's the tough.
We're getting, we're getting. Exactly. This is, this is all it is.
This isn't us.
What it's been since day one.
This is communication back and forth. This needs, you, you guys need to sit down together and you guys need to come up with this plan. Bottom line, if there is any inkling of this subdivision, which is apparently not a subdivision, but in White Pine County, it's a subdivision. If there's any inkling whatsoever that it doesn't pass the ordinances that are set forth already, which are written out very nicely in Jordan's pages that Lee appropriately gave to me on, on the website. If they're not in there, then, then there's cause for concern. And I think Lee, being brand new at this whole ballgame, he is just trying to cross his Ts and dot his Is. And I don't blame him for that. I don't blame him at all. And the engineer, you guys need to just sit down and you guys just need to hash it out with each other. That's the bottom line.
Yeah, there's a bottom.
Because like Lee says, the only issue here is that we don't want to be running the same thing that we're doing. This poor guy who's trying to build a building now, that the neighbor did something that they shouldn't have done. That should have been drained off into somewhere else. It shouldn't have been drained off into other person's property in the first place. But that's what we're just trying to avoid. So if, if this is, I mean, are we stressed, Casey, over time in, in the next?
We are because the guy needs a building permit and it shouldn't have been built in, how long ago?
So, so Lee, you have.
He has a building permit. It just has conditions on it.
This is David Weaver from White Pine Construction. The building department's agreed to give us a conditional building permit. They just won't finalize it unless infrastructure's done for the house. That means curb and gutter, sewer and water and power all have to be into that property. So he, and which will have to be done probably in, in three months. So my, the owner of the home is just. So he, and which will have to be done probably in, in three months. So my, the owner of the home is just concerned that if he starts the house, he won't be able to get it, nope, the infrastructure won't get done.
Hundred percent.
That's, I think, his only issue.
And I get that. Your, your concern, your concern is, I'm not gonna build a building, knowing not, knowing that it's not.